Okay, we'll call the Board of Supervisors meeting to order Monday, January 28, 5:30 PM. First thing on the agenda is proclamations, and I see we have none. So we'll go to item number two on the agenda. Approval of minutes of meetings, January 14, '21, and '22, 2019. And this was obviously contained in the Dropbox that was emailed out with the agendas, so.
Motion to approve the minutes of the January 14th, 21st, '22 minutes as presented.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Carried three to zero. All right, move to item number three, which is consent items. And we have, I'll review them. We have four. Item A is Class B Native Wine Permit Quiet Walker Lodge Incorporated. Item B fireworks permit sundown mountain and resort. Item C Dubuque County Treasurers Semiannual Report. And item D quarterly fees report of the Sheriff's Department. I understand we can have one motion for the consent items.
And I will make a motion to approve the consent items.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the consent items. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Carried three to zero. All right, item number four is the procurement procedures. So item A is a proof of publication amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Don't believe that was in the Dropbox, was it? Okay, all right, that's what I saw as well. So, no 4A?
No 4A. 4B request for proposals installation of a solar photovoltaic PV array at the Dubuque County West Campus. I guess I'll go to Anthony for that. You want to give us an explanation and tell me how bad I butchered the...
Photovoltaic, so yeah, you're very close.
Okay.
Yeah, good job. Yeah, this would be for the solar array project that we've been talking about at the new Dubuque shop office complex on the west end there. This would be a request to the bidders to submit a bid to us due February 25, 2019, to be open at the 5:30 PM board meeting. And then there's all the criteria in here as to what needs to be bid on. And there's a, we will also have a mandatory bid meeting with the prospective bidders on February 15 at my office.
Okay. Questions of the board members?
Nope. This was from the original contract, right? That we rephrase it was an option, the solar was an option for the Dubuque West Campus, and then we decided to rebid it?
That's correct, yeah. It was originally bid in the original contract. It was, the option was rejected, and so now we're to the point where we need to just go out and rebid it to make sure that we're above board on everything.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need to identify if the bid is for the full capacity or if it's to the net meter? Do you need to include that, Anthony?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
Well, whether we're bidding the whole array for the project.
Okay, I mean, it is a whole array to the project that was proposed. And we had a work session with Larry Stephan from Eagle Point Solar. It's basically what was discussed with him.
Okay.
It's very similar to that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion made and seconded to approve the request for proposals for the solar PV array at the Dubuque County West Campus. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried three to zero. All right, next up is under procurement procedures is item C request for bids. Interior improvements for Dubuque County shooting range. Assuming, do we need Sheriff Kennedy to come forward for that? No? In case there's questions, I guess. Either one, I think, is good.
I suppose if it's an outdoor range, that's why it's called the interior changes?
Yeah, the interior.
When I first saw that, I'm like, oh, we building a building out there?
Yeah, no, inside the berms. This is for the RFP for the concrete. We have to have, later on, I think it's action items, I think, that we've got our contract for our bullet trap. The bullet trap has to sit on concrete, so this is the request for bids for concrete to complete that part of the project so then we can get the, have the bullet trap installed.
Okay.
Okay, questions for Sheriff Kennedy?
I'll make a motion to proceed with the request for bids.
And I will second that.
Okay. So motion to proceed with the request for bids on the Dubuque County shooting range for the interior improvements for the concrete work. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item D request for bids tower site construction work for emergency responders' radio system upgrade.
Is that a public hearing? Oh, 4D, sorry, my bad. Wrong one. I get the wrong one.
So our radio system project is to the point where we are sending out for bids for the civils work, which includes, you know, the building of access roads and tower sites for the radio system. We're hoping to get that started first thing in the spring. We're sending out for bids for that work so that it can get started.
Questions on the request for bids for the tower site construction?
Nope, I'm all good.
Motion to approve the request for bids for tower site construction.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the request for bids for the tower site construction for the new radio system. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Carried three, zero. Thanks. Thanks again. Yeah. All right, moving to agenda item number five. And that is, the first would be proof of publication for public hearings. So, not applicable for tonight's meeting. Item B, public hearing amendment to zoning ordinance, case ZC number 12-44-18. David Hostert, Steve Ludwig, A1 Agriculture to B1 Business entertain a motion to table at the request of the applicants. Think it was weather related if I'm not mistaken.
I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Carried three to zero. All right. Item C under five, 5C, public hearing notice amendment to zoning ordinance. First case would be ZC number 01-01-19. Murphy Dairy Farms Incorporated and James Murphy, A1 Agriculture to A2 Agricultural Residential. Tammy, do you, are you going to the podium or... On an error?
It's a notice.
Okay, so this is just, we need a motion to approve the notice? All right.
Motion to approve the notice.
Did you, did you read both of those Supervisor Baker? Otherwise, I thought you stopped at the first one.
I will. Can we do those together?
Yes.
Okay. The next one would be C2, ZC number 01-02-19. Murphy Dairy Farms Inc. and James Murphy, A1 Agriculture to A2 Agricultural Residential. Does that repeat?
Just no.
Oh.
Very similar. Oh, yeah, they're one number different.
Yeah. Okay.
Sorry to be a... I knew you'd want to read them both. For the record.
I'll make the motion to approve the public hearing notice publication.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve signify, let's see, if you're in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carried three, zero. Now we're going to item 5D. That would be resolution setting public hearing on proposal to enter into a general obligation landfill facility loan agreement. So I'm assuming that John Foster is here, if you want to come forward, John? How do you do?
John? Good to see you again. Staying warm?
Trying to.
Does the garbage like the cold weather, or does the garbage not care?
It doesn't matter too much. Firm's the ground up, that's the nice thing. Less trucks getting stuck.
Maybe if you could induce yourself to the audience.
So I'm John Foster, and the agency administrator for the Dubuque Metropolitan Area Solid Waste Agency. Do you want me to give a brief overview of what we're requesting or...
Would be helpful to me, thank you.
Very good. Back in December of 2016, the DMA SWA requested authorization through its own, so the Dubuque Metropolitan Area Solid Waste Agency is an intergovernmental entity. It's a 2080, underneath a 2080 agreement. It's a partnership between the city and county of Dubuque to manage the solid waste needs for Dubuque County. Part of that is it manages the landfill. Really, that's the major activity that it conducts. Through the process of doing projects, it costs millions of dollars to develop a landfill for the design of the landfill itself. And so during the last project, we have a cell right now, it's divided up into five sections. So we're developing it through five different phases. Each one of those phases roughly about, what, over $4 million? Back in 2016, during 2014 and 2016, the agency needed to approach the county to request the backing for general obligation bonds. It was, it provided a little better opportunity for the agency itself for financing those cell projects so that way they didn't have to go out and seek its own revenue bonds. Really specifically what we're talking about today is in December 2016, the agency approached the Board of Supervisors requesting to back some general obligation bonds for the Cell 9 Phase 3 landfill expansion project. We ended up bonding for $5.1 million in total based on the engineer's estimate for that project. And again, when we start the financing of it, it's relatively early. We still haven't kind of completed all the engineering behind it, so it's kind of a rough gauge of where we're going to be at off of other projects. As we went through and finished up the project with the bidding that came in and some engineering design changes, the product came, the project came significantly under budget. To right now, what we're doing, we have a surplus in that, in that fund at $1.9 million. So the way it works, the county holds the bonds, and then it has a revenue sharing agreement with the Dubuque Metropolitan Area Solid Waste Agency. So what we're requesting at this point is to come back and talk to the supervisors. There's no legal obligation to do this, but we want to go through this process more as just the transparency so everybody's aware that we'd like to utilize these funds for other projects. There are needs for us for the landfill. The next specific one is our Cell 9 Phase 4 landfill expansion project. It'll be another 10-acre landfill expansion. We're accelerating this project a little bit. We can probably go another year without being forced to develop it. We want to do it a little bit early as well because try to capitalize on some of the construction activities that are occurring around the landfill right itself. So we're looking at hopefully coming in with bids significantly lower again on this project. So as part of this project, what we're requesting the Board of Supervisors to amend that revenue sharing agreement to include the landfill Cell 9 Phase 4 project so we can expend that $1.9 million for that project. The options of this, of the remaining funds is we can return the funds back. We cannot pay the bonds back directly. They're not callable for another five years, so either way they need to sit. Whether they sit with the agency or whether the agency turns around and hands them back to the county, there still needs $1.9 million just going to sit until those bonds are callable. And we'll go into a little bit more detail during the public hearing as a presentation was requested at that time.
Is the Cell 9 project, is that only the design, the engineering, the landscaping of the change of it, or is there a building that's included at all?
There will be no building.
No building.
It's just all excavation work and installation of the liner itself.
Okay, thank you. I'll state, I probably will vote against this. I generally would like to see our 2080 agreement revisited with the city. I think there's provisions in there that, along with the agreement that the Solid Waste Agency has with the city, I think there's a more fair and equitable solution to the 2080 parties, city and county, that I never can get an audience with. And so that's kind of where I'm standing right now in this.
Is this the appropriate time to do that, Jay?
Agreed, yeah. So, you know, in short, the city receives in administration fees $350,000 generally in that area to support their administrative items. County gets zero. The revenue from the Solid Waste Agency roughly $5 million, is that close?
Yes.
All but $5,000 of that, or maybe a little less, goes to the city. Maybe $100 grand for the grants or so to city staff for expenses and other pieces. The county receives $5,000 for illegal dumping. Is that still true? So very small amount. I just don't, there's two board members, two are city council, one are Board of Supervisors, of which I was one. Supervisor Baker graciously helped me out and served on that board, I appreciate it. I'd like us to revisit the 2080, but there seems to be no interest from the council or the city manager to do that. And that's, that's my frustration.
I'll comment on this. I'm the current representative, and as Jay said, I did take over this for him. I think we have been, you know, operating well. There have been times where I've stated objections and have received support from the other board members and the city manager on one occasion. In this case, I, you know, I understand, you know, revisiting the 2080, but that's not what this is about. We didn't even have to, they didn't, they had a legal opinion, and we had an internal opinion that we didn't even have to go to a public hearing on this. I asked for that out of an overabundance of being transparent. And the opinion was that the previous approved, when we, when they requested that we do the bonding, when that was approved, it wasn't specific on the project at the time. So the, from our bonding agent, the legal opinion was that we didn't need to go through this, but I asked that we do that. So I'm definitely going to support this. It's, it would just cost more money for no good reason not to approve this. So I will, that's, I guess that's all I'm going to say about this. Any other discussion or comments?
Well, being new, all of this is new. And I know that we have a dissatisfaction with the way that the income is dispersed from the 2080 agreement. I don't know that this is, this is the way to go about amending it. We can't do that in this forum. I think having the public forum and public hearing on this is the way to see if other citizens want to have that be addressed somehow. I respect that you don't have to go through this step to have a public hearing and to be before us with regard to this, that that original fund balance that is there because of the, it was a surplus. You don't need to do this, so I guess that's where I am, Jay, and just knowing what my decision's going to be. I'm, I am going to make a motion that we do publish hearing for a public note, a public hearing on this matter.
And I'll second it. Is there any further discussion? I do want to point out for those present, those who might be watching, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, John. This, the landfill agency uses zero taxpayer dollars from the county of Dubuque. Is that not correct? It's self-sustaining.
Correct. All the revenue it receives is from its tipping fees, so anytime anybody brings any material out to be managed, that's what comprises its operation and capital improvement budgets.
So if we...
User fee.
It's a user fee.
A user fee, yeah. So if we receive...
By citizens and businesses.
And I don't, $5,000, our net is $5,000 for the county.
So I think what Supervisor Wickham's referring to is the support through the illegal, you know, illegal dumping enforcement officer through the county conservation position. So we have a part-time position out there as a, as a contract with them as well. And then also any kind of illegal dumping support that's provided to the county for any secondary roads, you know.
My point, while there's no direct tax levy supporting this, and there's no direct budget from the county, the citizens pay for it. So the citizens who own homes pay a private contractor to pick up their garbage or the city, and then there's a fee for disposal of that. And so all of that revenue is, comes from the taxpayers in just the form of a user fee to bury your garbage. And my contention is if we, if we cooperated better, if we maybe looked further at our 2080 and our agreement with the city, solid waste agreement with the city, that maybe there's $300,000 to save every year with these administration fees. Maybe there's zero. But I was unable to get any traction to even look at that. And that's kind of my, my thought, is that the city runs, manages, and generally has authoritative control over a partnership, which is Dubuque Metropolitan Solid Waste Agency. And I just don't view it as a very fair and equitable partnership.
Okay, any other discussion?
I'm just wondering how voting no on this, Jay, gets us to, to address that.
Well, certainly giving them more money would be the opposite. So, so, you know, if I, you know, I would, if you want to spend less taxpayers' money, then, then don't spend the $1.9 million. That would be my, my one thought. But, you know, there's no direct relationship to this specific bond to having the city council members or Supervisor Baker's on the board or the city manager changing their opinion. I would doubt that. But hopefully my message has been heard. Hopefully the public heard it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Did you vote aye, Jay? Three, zero. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. All right. And we have... Item six. Oh, I'm sorry, 5E. 5E, notice of public hearing plans and specifications for Dubuque County shooting range interior improvements. Sheriff Kennedy is back on. And you, you're on for the next one as well?
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
This is just sent out a notice for public hearing in reference to the, the concrete project for the interior range improvement. That's about it.
Any questions for Sheriff Kennedy regarding the notice of public hearing, which is set for Monday, February 11, 2019 at 9:00 AM? Right here in the supervisors' chambers. What's your pleasure?
A motion that we approve the notice of public hearing.
And I will second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried three to zero. Now we'll go to 5F, which is the notice of public hearing plans and specifications for tower site construction work for emergency responders' radio system upgrade. So notice of public hearing, kind of the same.
Yeah, basically the same thing. It's for the RFP for the civils bids.
I'll make a motion to approve the notice of public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the notice of public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks Sheriff Kennedy. All right. Next we'll go to item six on the agenda, approval of Platts. We will need Tammy at the...
Want to do the fancy light trick? I think you hit the bottom one.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Pop, little popcorn? Soda, and be ready to go. Yeah, if you could do that way, that would help me.
Yes.
How did the change come about? I'm just curious. Was it, who spotted the error? Who's paying for it?
The homeowner, the homeowner himself was looking at, you know, where this was at. And then the association was also having some things that they needed changed. And there became the issue of actually some, you know, insurance issues and things like that. So, you know, who was responsible for the salt pond and how that was going to come to play. And then, so that the homeowners eventually, if he goes to sell the property, they were just trying to correct this, this problem where it's kind of went, I don't know where we're going here. So they're trying to correct the problem. So it hasn't created any extra lots, hasn't changed any of that.
Is there consensus about this?
Yes. Yes. And again, they're here to speak if you have some questions for them.
Let's, let's gauge the consensus. I'm not sure if you want to introduce who's, who's here.
Someone is here to speak, that's helpful.
Yeah. Normally we don't get association. I think the podium...
Probably the podium would be okay.
Right over there, yes.
I'm Jerry Showmeyer, officially Gerald. I'm a resident of Barrington Lakes. I own two lots. I reside on one, and the association and I have agreed that the adjacent lot that we own, that we bought to protect our, our view and our privacy, would be better served to be owned by our neighborhood. And so that's, that's what got this going. And there are some issues. There's a culvert that goes from the pond to the lake. It's on my property. They want to dig it up and replace it. I'm also they because I'm, I'm an association member. So, you know, for me, this has to be win-win.
Yes, and I'm Ken Erickson, the secretary.
Yes, and I'm Ken Erickson, Secretary of the Barrington Lakes Property Owner Association. And Roger Grunmeyer, the President of the Association, is here also. And we have been in discussions with Jerry over the last several months of some of the issues that were talked there. And we came to the agreement that this is just a win-win. It takes his existing home lot and it brings it up to the current standard of the one nat acre, which is slightly less than that now. It eliminates that easement that goes from our silt pond down to the lake. That will now be on the common property of Barrington Lakes. Both of his current lots touch on that one silt pond within Barrington. So you could argue there's some insurance liability if something would happen in there. So that moves all of that property to the Barrington Lakes Property Owner Association rather than to Jerry's personal ownership. So we think that this is just a win-win for both, so.
Okay, and Jerry, is your lot one? Is that what your house is?
Lot seven, lot-
Yeah, I'm pointing at lot one, okay, thank you. Nope, no worries. Excellent.
The light line is the current lot lines. And this corner right there catches, I'll put the pen on it instead, the corner right there catches a silt pond. The easement runs across the bottom there. The picture showed before, this point of the vacant lot comes down and touches on part of what's used as common property now, the beach area and the volleyball court. So it's taking some of his vacant lot and moving it into his home lot, is taking the remainder of that vacant lot and making it part of the common property then, adjoining the balance of the common property that's already there in Barrington.
Okay.
Very pleased that you were able to reach an agreement.
Yeah.
We like it.
Tammy, any other comments? How about Mr. Weber? I thought I saw Mr. Weber here before. Oh, okay, so he doesn't need to speak on this? I see his names on the plaque, okay. All right, any other questions?
No. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the final plat.
Second.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded to approve the resolution.
Thanks, Gus.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, carried three to zero. Okay. Okay, item six B. Block addition.
The property is owned by Michael and Janice Block and is located 0.49 miles south of the city of Dubuque along North Cascade Road with a total of 11.98 acres surveyed. The property is zoned R2 single-family residential. The purpose of the plat is to reconfigure two lots into two lots. The survey creates two lots. Lot one is a total of 6.23 acres surveyed with a home and it will be sold. Lot two is a total of 5.75 acres surveyed with a barn and it will be sold for a new home site. Lot one and lot two will both use existing residential accesses off of North Cascade Road. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat. The bank consent is signed and attached and all signatures are current. This plat has been reviewed by myself as Platts Officer and has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval.
Will there be anybody else to speak on this? Okay.
I can show you here what's happening on this. So as they're selling this property, you can see where this pond is part of a problem again. So they're correcting the lot line, so the pond is on this lot only. And then this one has had a home at one time and it's been torn down. And this is a home site that they plan on selling. And this one here as well has an existing home on it. So it's zoned residential, it doesn't create any kind of new properties. All it's doing is, it's an estate situation and they're fixing up this so that this doesn't become a problem down the road.
And it's the same property owner of the two lots?
Yes, exactly.
Make a motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the final plat. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, carried three to zero.
Thank you. Let there be light.
All right, item seven on the agenda. Action items. First up is...
Deputies and clerks.
Resolution, appointment of deputies, assistants, and clerks. And we have one, two, three, four, five from Sunnycrest, so I'll defer to Dawn Sherman, our Human Resource Director.
So all of those have been previously-
We're getting feedback from the other one there. Let's see if that helps.
These have all been reviewed and previously approved for the full-time position. The rest I review and give direction on to allow those to be approved. So they are all replacing vacant positions.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution for the appointment of deputies, assistants, and clerks at Sunnycrest Manor. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. All right, next up is item B, which is a resolution approving change order number four for the shooting range project. Sheriff Kennedy, you're going to wear the carpet out here.
This is for the final pay invoice for Steger and Hydershead, for Last Fall's work that they did on the shooting range project. There was a few changes made due to them having to put some extra riprap and things in to mitigate some water issues, so.
Do you know the dollar amount?
Off the top of my head, no.
Estimated?
Does this affect the cost of the overall project?
Forty thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars.
All right.
So we actually received this invoice in November and because of some miscommunication, it's just being brought up now, so.
Is it inside your budget on this project?
Yes, technically, yeah, so.
Are you recommending that we approve this?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
There's a motion made and seconded to approve the resolution regarding the approving change order number four for the shooting range project. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Thank you, Sheriff Kennedy. Okay, next up is item seven C. And that would be to approve necessary documents with Midwest Lift Works for the purchase of one frame model lift and one two-post lift. And for this, we will defer to our county engineer, Anthony Barjat.
What this is about, between Shop Forum and Ted Freiberger and myself, we had, we tried to come up with some specifications to be a part of the shop and office project bid for these two different vehicle lifts that will be in the shop. For whatever reason inadvertently, the specifications were left out of the bid. And so the contractor never bid on these specific items. These two items are very crucial to our shop. You know, we need the two different lifts to be able to lift up the heavy-duty trucks and then also the pickups. So we've been working with Midwest Lift and they are a part of the National Joint Power Alliance, which is a national contract. It's already been procured, much like a state contract. And so this would be for one heavy-duty lift, which is a frame model, 64,000 pound capacity. And the other one is a two-post, 26,000 pound capacity lift for a total of 121,652 dollars. And I'm looking to pull this out of our equipment budget, make that a part of that.
Makes sense. Any questions for Anthony?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
There's a motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. I had the good fortune of, at the site meeting two weeks ago, approximately two weeks ago, was entered into a discussion with the representative from Midwest Lifts. And found him to be very thorough and he'll need to coordinate with Portson regarding when they put the floor in and that type of thing. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Carried three to zero. Next up is a resolution, item D, seven D, resolution approved Iowa DOT Preconstruction Agreement Number 2019-C-082 for a primary road project for project number NSIPX-136-351-31-31 on Iowa 136. Anthony?
Yes, what this is about is the Iowa DOT is going to be resurfacing Highway 136 between Worthington and Dyersville. And with that, I've requested that they pave 50-foot fillets, asphalt fillets, on three of our side gravel roads. One would be Rockville Road, the other Bezler Road, and one Little Road. And we typically, on our paving jobs, we will pave back 50 feet from the edge of the mainline pavement. That way the maintainer operator doesn't have to drive right up and maintain that gravel right up to the edge of the road. So they've agreed to put this in their set of plans. And basically the agreement spells out that Dubuque County will be responsible for approximately $17,000 of the cost. Anything outside of 10 feet from the edge of the pavement, we're responsible for the cost of that. And I would recommend this.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
There's a motion made-
Second.
-and seconded to approve the resolution in item number seven D. Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Seven, item seven E on the agenda. It's a resolution approving the addition of Collins Community Credit Union to the depository agreement. Is there anybody to speak to this? Would that be Denise or?
There was an email from Eric Stearman, the Treasurer.
Okay. All right, I'll read the email quickly here. It's from Eric Stearman. Dawn and Mary, I have attached a resolution for accepting Collins Community Credit Union into our depository agreement, allowing them to bid on our CDs. Please put on the next possible agenda, thank you, Eric Stearman. Okay, is this the normal process for this? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution approving Collins Community Credit Union, adding them to our depository.
Okay.
And I will second that.
All right, there's a motion made and seconded to approve the resolution regarding adding Collins Community Credit Union. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Okay, seven F, approving the, a resolution approving the DARE quarterly claim.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution approving the DARE quarterly claim. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, carried three to zero. Okay, item seven G, Sheriff Kennedy, resolution approving the signing the necessary documents with Meggitt for the bullet trap at the shooting range. And we have County Attorney CJ May as well.
Welcome.
Well, we received the bids back in the beginning of the month for the bullet traps. We only received one bid. It was from Meggitt Training Corporation and it was for 208,000 and some change on that. County Attorney May looked over the contract. He agreed that it was, sounded like it was equitable for both parties. And we would like to get the contract signed. The contract per Meggitt's instructions, we have to have the contract signed within 45 days. Otherwise it's subject to change. So after the contract's signed, they'll do, they'll send us our plans within about 10 days. And then, once we approve the plans, it should take 90 to 100 days, or 90 to 120 days to produce the product. And then we have to take ownership of it within 180 days. So.
All right, thank you.
I really appreciated you looking at that.
Oh, yeah.
The county attorney eyes on the contract, I'm sure you appreciated that as well.
Yep, absolutely.
Just for the benefit of the folks that are here and watching, County Attorney May has, since taken office on January 1st, he's committed to being available for the board, including being present at meetings when he can be here on a routine basis. So appreciate that.
Oh, you're welcome, yeah.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, carried three to zero. All right. We have, the next item is...
Master Matrix.
Is that on our, I'm not seeing that here.
H, seven H?
Maybe I didn't go far enough.
Yeah, page, what page is it?
Page 126.
126, yep, thank you.
All right, well, I'll read the, it's a resolution, it's seven H, approving the DNR Master Matrix relating to construction of confinement feeding operations structure. And I guess I'll open it for discussion.
Is this a change from our current DNR relationship related to the Master Matrix?
The only thing that was updated were the dates.
Just the dates, okay. This is an annual, it's recommended by ISAC that we get the resolution in. If we fail to do that by January 31st, and they must receive it, I've talked to Dawn, assuming that we pass this, it has to be in their hands in some fashion by January 31st. But by not approving this, we give up any input into large consolidated animal feeding operations. And I don't think the neighbors would probably be very happy if we didn't allow them to at least have a voice on that, so.
And we have, my understanding is historically we have passed this resolution several years.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, and I will second that.
There's a motion made and seconded to approve the Master Matrix resolution. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, carried three to zero. All right, communications? None, we'll go to nine, item nine on the agenda, which is appointments. And we have... Approval of appointments, we have item one. Township clerks and trustees, one trustee vacancy for Mo Salem and Vernon. One clerk vacancy for Center, four-year terms ending December 31, 2022. And I think Dawn and Mary have been working on this. I know Mary's been doing a lot of work on the township clerks and trustees. Mary, you have any comment?
I see Center on there, too.
What's that?
Is there three of them? Did you read Center, too?
I thought I did.
Okay, my-
Township clerks, one trustee vacancy for Mo Salem, another for Vernon, one clerk vacancy for Center. And they're all three are four-year terms ending December 31, 2022. We have-
Thank you.
I can read- The names. Thank you. For Vernon trustee position, Vernon Township trustee, Daniel B. Zaki?
Yep.
Okay. The next one is for Mo Salem, Scott Weemerskurch. I didn't have any problem with that one because I know some Weemerskurches, so. And from, this is a individual on Center Township, Lawrence Lee, moving from trustee to clerk. So.
I'll make a motion to approve the clerk and trustee appointments.
I'll, I'll second that and I would like to make a comment as part of discussion.
There's a motion made and seconded to approve the appointments. I'll open the floor for discussion.
Just want to thank these individuals. I don't know that they're in the room. They usually are not. But it is vital to county government that folks step forward and do these critical roles. And I think we should be delighted that, and with your help, Mary, that we are filling these vacancies. So I thank you. Probably in this room, we have others who wear that hat as well, so thank you.
Yes, and I've actually had discussions with Mr. Lee on a couple of issues in my two-plus years on the board, so. Okay. And also, I want to give, let everyone know that Mary Hubble has been involved in conducting training that hasn't been done in many, many years for township trustees and clerks. And we got a lot of really positive feedback on that. And I think it's actually helped in the recruiting process and so. Anyway, so thank you, Mary. All right, the next one.
Did we vote on it? Did we vote?
Yeah, you need to vote.
Oh.
I think we had a motion.
Okay. Thank you for straining me out there. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Item number nine, under nine, number two, A2, would be the MHDD stakeholder application. And it's, we have applicant Michael Poroski.
Gynecologist and medical associates.
Okay. I'm just looking to see, make sure there, is there any other, was there just one? Okay, what's your pleasure?
I would certainly make a motion to approve the appointment of Dr. Michael Poroski to our Dubuque Stakeholders Committee with regard to our mental health. That's a critical piece as we fill out that stakeholder committee, as we look at any spend-down requirement that may be left to the county for our regional funds, as well as helping us be sure we're providing all the services that are needed and we have no laps.
Yeah, and I will second that.
All right, motion is made and seconded to approve the appointment of Dr. Poroski. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, carried three to zero. All right, now we go to B, open vacancies for informational purposes only. So we do have opportunities to serve if people are interested. And we'll go to item 10 on the agenda. Personnel requisitions. Item A, permanent full-time jail control operator for the Sheriff's Office. And we'll go to Don Sherman for an update on this.
I'm recommending approval. This opening is due to an employee actually transferring to the records division at the Sheriff's Department. And so this is just to backfill that, the, the now vacant jail coordinator, or jail control operator position.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the personnel requisition. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Tabled and pending items. I see none. Public comments, item number 12 on the agenda. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters which are of concern to that person and which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address, make your comments. However, no formal action on your comments may be taken at this time because of the notice requirements. And just FYI, this is not to do with the UTV or ATV. There's a separate work session for that coming up shortly. Any public comments, if anybody has any, please approach the podium? None?
Was it?
I would say, I'm going to ask for a very brief recess.
Or just recess?
No, because we have meetings scheduled, so. I'm going to ask for a motion to take a brief recess.
Okay. I will second your motion to recess.
Okay. All right, motion.
Should we ask or make it?
I, I didn't make it. I, I was asking for a motion.
Make a motion to recess until 6:30.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, all right, necessity break.
Thank you.
Mary, can you read all 600 pages into the record? 6:30.